... United States of America.
... stands one nation, under God, into this vote for liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Nadel, can you take the long call for the record, please?
Sure thing. Commissioner Bahacow.
Here.
Commissioner Whitaker.
Here.
Mr. Barriosso.
Here.
Commissioner Radkowski.
Here.
Commissioner Neary.
Here.
Lisa Katania.
Here.
Michael Pierce.
Here.
And George Nadel, myself present.
Thank you. At this time, we'll take citizen comments. Residents can comment during this time by dialing 571-748-4021 and entering code 461-981-560 POUND. Again, the number is 571-748-4021 and entering code 461-981-560 POUND. To unmute your phone, dial POUND 6, uh, STAR 6. After leaving your phone, state your name and address, then begin your comment. We'll be given two minutes to speak, and we'll be placed back on mute after your comment. With that said, if there's any citizen comments, please dial in. I'll give it another minute. Apparently, there's no citizens' comments, so at this time, we will move on to our meeting. That approval of the minutes for the May 14, 2020 Board of Commissioners Caucus meeting and the May 21, 2020 Board of Commissioners meeting. So moved.
I agree with that.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to ask Commissioner Neary to read our motions. And if anybody would like to second after he reads it, I would appreciate it. Move to accept the late plan option for the Bethel and Mill Roundabout.
Second.
All in favor?
Questions?
Are there several?
Yeah, there's, uh, so there's four options. So maybe Lisa could go through and explain a little bit.
There are four separate options, to which I don't think that it's something that I'd want to do. The first option is to take, put short on roadway lights, so they're, they're short lights, um, they would be between the sidewalk and the curb, and then all of the other roadway lights would end up being at the edge of the sidewalk. So there's, it's an option, however, it's not very completely pleasing, but it actually came from the consultant for Pennbach. They didn't feel, and I heard, there were different light fixtures in that area, decorative like pedestrians, that this short arm, um, light, and then again, they, um, the typical roadway light. Um, the second option is to attach to those utility poles, so it'll be no decorative, and I don't think that's an option that, that we would like to say. However, again, if anyone wants to use four of them, it's, uh, your call. The fourth option is to change all the lights to six-foot arms, so all the lights would be between the curb and the sidewalk, and they'd add short arms to them. Um, they're hoping in doing it this way that they can avoid any of the utilities that that are now going to be relocated to the back of the curb, between curb and the sidewalk. Um, they still have to do a little bit of work with that, but they think that they can accomplish that. The fourth is to increase the height of the roadway lights. So instead of them being 20 foot high, they would actually be 40, excuse me, 30 foot high. In doing that, they can actually put one light in each corner, so we'll have less lights that we have to maintain, we'll have the same lighting levels, and don't put pedestrian lights as they would typically for, for the walkways. Um, as I told you last week, I thought that was, was the best option, that's the one I would recommend, but I'm going to leave it up to the board, as I should, um, so the board will make that decision.
So amend the motion to read out for.
Uh, uh, option four, I'm in favor of, of option four also. See if it's okay to second.
I was just saying, option one was a short road, and that was road and that.
Right.
So option, because you said four, then you said four again, I, I just, the four, the four is to, to height, to 30 feet height?
The four is 30 foot height.
Recommended.
And that's the one, that, that would give us four lights on, on each quadrant, it's not really intersection.
Right.
And then all of the walkway lights, so you'll have a very symmetrical, um, design.
With the 30 foot, so that, that's actually option four.
That's option four. The third option is to do, um, the, all the shorter lights, and they would, they would be around the perimeter, um, on the back of the curb, between the curb and the sidewalk.
If, if we're going 30 feet a little higher than normal, that means our LED light needs to be a little bigger to be able to expand out more?
As part of the photometrics they do for the design, they have standards, they'll do the calculating, calculation to verify that meets the, the regulation.
Would the 20 feet, would the 20 foot lights have to be more? Do you have more of them or the same number?
You would have to have more.
Okay.
Any other comments?
Well, so yeah, there was a couple of options laid out, uh, in the beginning, some information that was done by the Historical Society. Uh, I'm trying to look at it from like a practical perspective of what's going to, how it's going to affect the businesses or the residents of those roads. So for instance, the One Township Road will essentially be replacing Garfield, so we do have a few addresses that currently have that Garfield address. So if we were to change that road to a different name, they're going to need a new address. But I think we all know from dealing with address changes that it can become kind of difficult. The other, uh, thing was, the, the one, uh, and that's the road that would be literally up by, um, uh, uh, Willers and that area right up there. Um, the, the second road is a little bit, we were going up 452, uh, once you get, once you get to where the, uh, Sumerco Station was and the Acton Tower, that's that, on that right-hand side there. Uh, currently, those properties have Conchester Highway, the Conchester Road addresses. What I was thinking was, it might make better sense and be a little bit easier if we went back and just called that Conchester Road, and then focused on change, making the highway, making the addresses on the highway, the Conchester Highway, and then possibly even doing the east or west there. Because that's not negatively going to affect your ability to get mail, things like that, whereas if we were to physically change that road to a different name, those businesses are going to have to change their address on itself. Again, it's up to the board, there's definitely a, a flurry of options that you could use. Uh, these may, these roads will not get changed, their names for eight years, nine years possibly. Um, they're just asking for the names to be put on the plans now.
Is that just two roads you're talking about?
Those are the two roads, yes. The other road that was initially discussed was, uh, the portion of the road that is 90% of the roads in Bethel, and then we had a small section of it. Bethel is, is there maybe at the east branch there? So I don't think we really have the option to change the name of our small section.
And can you provide two suggested names? So two is Garfield, and three is Conchester Road?
Yes.
I just want to call it in correctly, so that, I don't want it whole. If Road Two is actually the one that's Conchester, I'm like...
Yeah, so Township Road Two is the bottom one.
What?
That would be Conchest, Conchester Road.
Number two.
Number two, okay.
Number two is Conchester Road, okay.
Number three would be Garfield, Garfield Avenue.
Then I'll amend my motion to insert after, in the first blank, Conchester Road, and in the second blank, Garfield Avenue.
Please.
Motion in the second, all favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried. Considering a, a motion approving an employment contract with the township manager, so moved?
Second.
All in favor?
I have a couple questions. I have, any question? I got one question. Is that it to you, Chester?
All duration of the, of this term of office. So every January when we reorganize, it has to be redone? They, they cannot exceed the date, date of your term. So here are my questions. First one is under compensation, uh, compensatory, okay. I don't really think that's the way to treat a professional, personally. You know, you work the hours, you work, if, if it's over, okay, if it's short, you, you get treated like a professional. I, I know the kind of work that you do, and I don't think that that's, um, needed in here. I, and I don't want you to turn into a captain keeping hours, I know you don't, but...
I read that, I read that too, and I wasn't sure if it was a standard, if this was like a standard format, or what, but I was going to raise that, well, I thought that was like nitpicking, like...
Yeah, so, so the contract that I initially added is currently in place, says that to, to accept comp time, that I must calculate it as we go and give a key pass. So a couple of times over the past five years, I've calculated it, and it comes to about 40 hours every three months. To be honest with you, I can't justify to the public adding an extra week off every, every three months. Like, the job requires a lot more than just coming in 40 hours. So, I mean, typically, we handle it as a professional environment in there, if somebody needs, you know, to go to a doctor's appointment, okay, make up the, you know, we, we make up the time, it's not, it's, we don't really go into a, a deep of, let's calculate all this comp time and go from there. Um, I personally don't think I have any interest in calculating that comp time, because I don't know where I would use that time off anyway, and not, and be able to stay up with the amount of work that we have, so I have no issues with, with that being something that's...
Did we do our comp time anyways?
It's still, it's in, it's in a lot of the contracts, the employment contract, but really, we kind of have like a, a unwritten rule where we kind of just, you know...
So, so under hours of work per manager, which is item, uh, 5C, anything after the first sentence, where it says accordingly, the manager shall be, all the way to the end, should be deleted.
I can do that, I can take care of that.
It's page, uh, or three, uh, subsection five, so subsection C, and then...
When, when I left that in there, I didn't know whether there was a specific reason for that.
It's not, it may, it's not in my recommendation to remove everything after according to the, to the end. I mean, it does say that he's going to work the hours, and he's going to be attending monthly caucus and regular meetings, but outside of that, I don't think we do that.
I mean, I think the, the reason that's in there is because typically, managers, that that's what that is for, the compensation for them.
Does everybody, yeah, does everybody go for change?
Yep.
What's the next, one next thing I have? Under severance comp, compensation, it says, the value to upper Conchester of six managers' continuing expertise, I believe that should be the word, uh...
It is, uh... Nice, let's read it for a minute.
Okay. I know, I, I sent it, I believe. Um, then on the next page, uh, under severance compensation, and I mean, I know what you wrote me, but I, I would prefer to hear from the solicitor, uh, to help, um, any part of this agreement serving, extending past the life, the commitment extending past life of this current board. So if on December 31st next year, say there was going to be a whole new board, we could basically lay you off or fire you, and you would get compensation, whereas, and we would be committing the new board to it.
I think, yeah, you are, you are permitted to have severance agreements in there as part of a contract, and they basically survive any of that as long as the term of the contract is not longer than binding future board. That severance agreement, that severance time would be, based on what I've seen in the court cases I've seen, is a reasonable time, and even if it were December 31st, and that was enforceable, I think that that would be, uh, that would be acceptable.
So if, once again, hypothetical, so if we, if the current board decided to terminate the, the manager, maybe main judge of it, on December 15th of next year, how much compensation is, how much severance pay would he be entitled to?
120 days.
So you are binding the future board?
Well, it, uh, they don't consider that binding, they would consider it, they would consider the term of the contract, meaning if it were longer than two to three years, that's where that issue comes into about binding future boards. The term of this contract, because it would run from, for argument's sake, the day of the reorganization till two years subsequent to that, any term with contained within that period of time is not, i- it does not exceed that period of time. Because you look at the time that it runs, it runs from the time, you know, we're making it retroactive from the reorganization to the following reorganization in, in two years, that, that's the term of the contract. So if you laid him off on December the 31, effective December the 31st, he would still be within that contract time, and yes, he would get his 120 days.
Well, uh, Mike, under the, uh, hypothetically, again, when the next reorganization, that following year, would he still be entitled to it if the new board decides not to hire him back or the manager?
No, this, this contract would have, that would have ended at that reorganization meeting.
I'm just, I'm just...
Right, I'm just...
All right, I just wanted to talk about that. We, there's no, we can't extend it past two years.
Correct, you can't, you can't extend, you couldn't get, and for argument's sake, a five-year contract.
Yeah, but you, what I'm concerned about is in cap, because you're extending the payment term, so essentially, the manager would be getting two, two years and four months. But I'm fine with that, because you just, I'm waiting there.
Correct.
Thank you. Was that a joke? Yeah. Okay. So there's a motion in the sec, there's a motion in the sec, in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
That motion included the omission of that section.
Correct. 5C, a portion of it.
And I'll redo that contract to make sure that it's done.
Consider motion authorizing the township solicitor to draft an ordinance amending chapter 555 Vehicles and Traffic, Article 2 Traffic Regulations, Section 29, Altering Vehicles.
Second.
Question, question. What are we altering on the ATV part?
Um, so, uh, what Mike was looking at, and you, uh, there's some stuff in your, uh, check list here, so basically, we've had some issues throughout the township with, uh, ATVs and dirt bikes, again, uh, obviously with a lot of people being home and the weather being nice. Um, so there's a couple of really good items that I think could be included, that, that should be up for discussion once we get to drafting. Um, we looked at Downingtown's ordinance, so for instance, in Downingtown's ordinance, on any more than four ATVs or dirt bikes driving on, riding on one property, uh, would, uh, constitute the need for a special event permit. So, uh, you know, obviously, that would be something, um, the other thing is that we get a lot of complaints about, um, the, the constant driving of them on relatively small properties. So the, uh, the way that the ordinance, uh, that we pulled, one of the ones we pulled from Downingtown is, uh, is worded, is that you can only drive them for a certain amount period of time without, uh, having some type of permission.
So, so it's more or less what we're, because I know the issue, because we're busy in my board anyway.
Yeah.
I doubt, yeah. But, what I'm understanding is, we, we implemented this because we never had it back in 2012, and how, but like you said, the issue is, we're, we're not really omitting what we have already, we're just adding the problems that we did not realize back in 2012, with the dirt bikes, they, like you said, four or more on a private property, and also the time because it's, now we're doing it in the yards for hours and hours and hours. We still got the issue going on the street, we still got the issue behind meaning as park departments and everything else, but I was just questioning that. I agree, I agree 100% for the dirt bikes, the time limit for noise, how we, so our police could actually enforce something, we have nothing to enforce, and then that, the idea of, hey, if you're going to have four on your property, you're going to tear up your property, we're going to have a special program there to do something. I, I, I just wondered if we weren't revoking the whole ordinance that we already had, I'm just trying to tweak it.
Yeah, I think what's good about doing something like this is that, you know, you don't want to completely restrict something, so this doesn't completely restrict it, but it sets better parameters, right? So it's, it's, uh, you know, there, we do have certain circumstances in the township where people have properties of roughly an acre where they drive for very long periods of time, around, around the outside, and it's very loud, um, you know, but it, it can become, it can become an issue between neighbors. So with something like this, I think we have some good team to be able to go, go to the situation where it is an issue between neighbors and discuss with them, like how we can be better neighbors, you know?
Mr. Peters, I have a question on the, on private property. Is it actually recommended to have them post, uh, their property, that if this, uh, personal property or private property has like acres of ground, and this is where the issue is? Is it more protective for them to put, to post it and ask to be able to go after them?
Well, you, you would, you would certainly have the ability to post private property with basically no trespassing signs, that would certainly provide notice, but understand that there are requirements for spacing of the sign, size of the sign, where it is on the perimeters, that's really a private property issue, but this would at least allow for, what the goal, as I understand it, for this ordinance is to provide for better ability to enforce, uh, issues related to these type of vehicles. Um, is it going to be perfect? You know, a, a lot of it is going to be regulated by the Motor Vehicle Code, but a lot of these bikes don't fall within that motor vehicle code. So we're trying to clean up, tighten up the language in our current ordinance to be able to address those issues.
All right, motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion is carried. Consider motion removing the valid salvage license requirements from the county, from the towing RFP prepared by the township manager and reviewed by the solicitor.
I agree with that.
I assume this is, this is this document?
Yeah, so, um, a while back, I was asked by the board to put together a, uh, RFP for towing services, salvage services, um, what was brought after review from board members was that there is a potential that people may not be able to acquire that license at this time, uh, due to the COVID-19. So what this would do would add in language that basically would say that we're not going to, uh, disqualify your application due to not having the salvage license, although I do believe it should have some language in there that they wouldn't be able to, um, like, they could be awarded the contract, but they couldn't start business until they received a valid salvage license. I think, uh, Mike, did you have anything else on that?
Right, that, that's, a- a- as I understand it, a couple of the applicants may be having difficulty with the paperwork, getting their formalized salvage license, so what I recommended to George and the board, what I would recommend to the board is, that's fine, we can award the contract, but they can't begin the, the process of doing the towing for the township until they provide the copy of the salvage license, which, as we would assume at this point in time, would be in process. So that's just a cover in case they, they've made their applications, they've gotten all their paperwork in, they just haven't received it to be able to provide it at the time that we want to go out to bid on these things.
My, my only concern with that is, you know, if somebody applies, and it was, it's the law of the board to award this person, but my feeling is, you can't award it to them unless he has the salvage license.
Now, they can't, they, you can award the, you can award the contract based on this, but if they can't provide the documentation that says they have the salvage license, then they can't, they can't begin to work on the contract pursuant to the contract. Then you would go on to the next qualified person to be able to do that. In order for them to begin working on that, they're going to have to provide this salvage license. We're not going to allow them to do any towing until such time as they provide that accurate salvage license.
Now, they can provide to, to say, to 20, to say it expired June 2020, they can still at least show proof that they had the license.
Yes, at the time that they begin the contract, that's correct.
Or even beforehand, just to say, hey, we, we had it, but it's not removed because of the state or whoever.
Well, that, that, we would certainly want to look into that, they're going to have to provide more than just saying, you know, well, I applied for it, I want to see the application, I want to see that it's in process, and that it's still, a- as of June 2020, for argument's sake, that it's still a license in good standing, it's just a matter of that, you know, Harrisburg's not processing it at this point.
Right.
Right, and is it, and if we did get an application from someone, and they, they stated something like that, we would most likely say, you know, uh, we would like additional information, could you provide us a copy of your application, could you, you know, seeking documentation to be able to quantify that that's the matter?
Or, or it would be a conditional, a conditional awarding of the contract, that they provide proof that they have an active license. If they don't provide that proof, then they're not going to get the contract.
Then they can't fill the contract.
That's right.
So my concern is, is that if that's the case, then that should be something that we authorize, like the manager to do, that there's an application period happening, certain timeframe, a person applies, and they don't have their salvage license at the time of application, they just say, hey, you have 30 days, or, or based on the states, the status of what's happening in the state, you can accept your application without the license, right, pending the license. I don't think you could take that out of the, um...
Agreement.
Out of the agreement, I think it's understood, you as a manager say, hey, we'll accept your application, and then if we have it by the time we're ready to award it, then you award it, because...
Right, you, you have to, you have to provide proof that you have, or that, you know...
From, from my perspective is that, uh, essentially, to be able to do the work, you, to, to be able to be the towing company, do the selling, right, to do all that work, you would need that license.
Right.
So if the, the RFP was designed and written for someone to be able to do that work, so this is essentially saying, hey, we understand that, uh, like, I'm going to now be accepting application... applications for someone who, at the time that I accept that application, may not be able to do the work.
So how many years will the salvage license out?
One year.
So they have, you can do it every year?
So like, for instance, let's say someone, a cook like, so I'm going through the details of someone and someone applies, right? If I was going through and doing, doing the calculation now, if they did not have a salvage license, I would disqualify them as their application because they wouldn't be able to do the job.
Right.
However, if someone, because of the extreme, like the circumstances that people are prescribing, that, you know, someone may not be able to have their salvage license today because of, it's stuck in an application portal, something to that magnitude, this would allow for those people, based off of the language in the RFP, would allow for them to apply and say that the board would not disqualify their application based off of the fact that they don't have a salvage license.
I'm sorry, but we would continue to use the salvage that has a license until that point in time, even though you say I ordered...
That would absolutely be the best interest of the community.
So I accepted the contract or the agreement from towing company A, but they can't get it for two months, or we're using somebody other than our current salvage, company B, and they would stay on until...
You want to keep them on until the person could enter into the legal agreement.
This RFP going out, for which year, this year or next year?
For whenever they, at this point, we, you know, we have, are using an alternate company.
Right.
So essentially, it would take place, it would start whenever it starts, and we would probably enter into an agreement like previously had, that has an evergreen clause in it, that they would continue to be this salvage until you get to a point where the board would say, George, we'd like to do a RFP for your service.
So this isn't a one-year contract?
The one-year, the one-year contracts with the nevergreen clause. That's what you have done to advance.
So now, what, do you have any information on the date as far as when that process is gonna start being held up, have you go get that?
I was unable to get, I made some phone calls, but I was unable to get any information as to who, you know, who is holding, hardly is holding.
I'm not aware, I'm not aware of anything being held up.
I think it's gonna be a case-by-case basis. Someone puts in that application and they say, I applied, and if it's being held up, then we can do something at that time and say, okay, let me call, let me find out about their application, and then ask them for documentation.
So then, have the RFP gone out yet?
No, because this question, so I'm gonna get this out ASAP, but as I've written, there was, there was a question, and the question is that salvage license, which is the key to being able to do the work essentially, so I wanted to make sure that there's clarification.
And currently, we have no active salvage license in this township.
I'm not aware of any companies that have an active salvage license in upper town.
All right, so, my last discussion, so, is the vote to amend the RFP, which would state, prior to starting, you have to have your salvage license, or do we leave the RFP as is? So...
I think we need to remove it, but at the same time, cover it to show it, if you don't start it, let's say, have it.
Well, that goes without saying. I mean, that, you're not gonna, you're not gonna allow them to start until such time as they produce the salvage license, because that's a condition that's ancillary to their being able to, to engage in the contract. If they don't have the salvage license, the contract is just null and void, it doesn't go anywhere.
And that's a stipulation of your previous contract, that would be stipulation in the contract.
And you would do that when you, when you have the selection. If you would, if you would select somebody that say, you know, their salvage license is in process, well, then it would be a conditional acceptance of that person pending the proof sufficient to the township that that salvage license is active and will be active at the time that the contract is, is engaged in.
I believe, I believe it as is and have our township manager just explain that process to anybody applying for permission or whatever's recommendation, so. I, I would vote not to remove it, and just have George explain it to the, to the applicants, that you can apply, but you, but you're not gonna get it unless, unless you receive these salvage licenses. That's my opinion, but the rest of the board can then change that, and then we, we can vote on it.
I'm, I'm fine with it. I mean, the only thing I would like to say, if possible, if you're staying in the town, if we throw somebody's car, that's why I was asking if we had any active, no, we only have one.
Yeah, we do, but nobody ever votes for them. So, the one that is in town that doesn't have the salvage license, that's still operating for other municipalities?
It's not working for us.
Exactly, when he's located in other towns and he's operating for other municipalities and he doesn't have a salvage license. So is that, is that, Mr. Pierce, is that a violation for a business in our municipality to be operating without a salvage license? They don't work for, for us, for the township, they don't talk for us, but they talk for other municipalities in Delaware County?
That's on, that's on the other municipalities, there's not definitively a requirement to have a salvage license to operate a towing business, as far as I know.
Okay.
We're making it a requirement.
Right, okay. No, I'm not, I thought what you were saying.
All right, so, if we're not going to remove it, then can we have a motion to review it?
We have a motion in a second, because you have to have a motion in a second for discussion. I moved it at five seconds. If you have a discussion. So we have a third option. If you want to amend the motion, either you state a new motion, or...
Or you vote against that.
All right, well, let me get, we just voted against it.
All in favor? Aye.
A reprobate?
Aye.
An aye would be your four.
Taking it out of the RFP.
Take it out of the RFP.
So it's moved as is on the paper.
So yes is to remove it, no is not to remove it. So Commissioner Biaka, would you like to remove it?
I thought that's what we said, we would... I, I understand.
Right, we gotta move.
I'll vote to remove it.
No.
Myself, no. So yes. So you, 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 you vote for aye. And you vote yes, also. I vote no.
I wouldn't leave it the same.
Okay.
I wanted to say how it is, we don't need to change it, right?
Then you, then you would vote no, Commissioner Biaka.
No.
Motion fails three to two. We are not removing it.
Thank you. Just to be clear, I was voting to leave it as stated on the paper, that we're not removing it. So I voted yes. My motion was to remove it.
Correct.
And I voted yes, I voted yes, and you voted yes.
I wanted to stay the same.
Stay the same as this?
Stay the same as the paper?
Stay the same as this?
No, you only have that, right there.
Okay, so then you voted no, so it's fair. That will preclude you from proceeding with an RFP again. I just added that, okay? Question. Consider motion, a resolution temporarily suspending the normal rules and regulations related to temporary non-permanent restaurant operations, including the waiver of fees, and implements temporary rules and regulations as outlined in the Non-Permitted Restaurant Operations Terminatation.
Second.
Any questions? Motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried. Consider a resolution, did you want to give us a number?
It's 2020-24.
Consider a resolution authorizing the escrow release for Mark Waselli's in the amount of $1,500. Any questions? All in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried. Consider a resolution authorizing the escrow release for Chester Woodard Arnie in the amount of $143. All in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried. Consider a resolution authorizing the escrow release for Pasco Linas De Corelli in the amount of $2,091.25. All in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried. Consider a motion hiring Andrew Anderson for the position of full-time administrative assistant.
Second, Henderson.
I'm sorry, that's what it is.
Anderson, so now I should say Anderson.
Henderson.
Question. Did we get a job description that exactly what his job is, George?
Yeah, it's, it's the same one we do use for the administrative assistant, I can report that along everybody. Just normally, administrative tasks, helping all of the different departments down here that don't have a dedicated administrative assistant, as well as handling communication efforts for the township, recording the meetings, reading the newsletters, attending events, doing all that. And other duties assigned by the township manager, rec director, planning assistant township manager. We keep this.
All I would say is, Andrew's been a very positive worker here. He's, I think it's a very smart hire. He's, I think he's gonna be an asset for the, for the township.
I agree, I have no problem with him, but we thought he was gonna be part-time, we were gonna hire another full-time, does this mean he's gonna be the full-time?
We're not hiring another full-time. So we're just hiring him now?
I mean, don't get me wrong, I know, I mean, there wasn't this situation that we were breaking down with the board with, a budget, everybody kept saying budget, 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 but I just, something needed to be, just weighted upon a little bit to see where we're at, and we're just passing another, I know it was budgeted, a lot of things were budgeted, just still, we're gonna be meeting, trying to figure out our best interest in the township, where to work out, where we stand, if we waited a month or two, until we see numbers, I mean, we're not doing that, we're not, with CEIT, I mean, I guess I gotta bring it down now, what was it, we're out three months of people working in upper town, give or take, wasn't a setback. So that heard our EIT coming in, and we projected coming into this township, which the number projected we, that we pay up, well, since we're here in the neck, bringing it out.
Not everyone that isn't working, is not working at home, there are people that are working at home, so that doesn't affect our EIT. We have looked at preliminary numbers, George and Nedline have sat down, we're still waiting for a fire emergency, aren't we, for those numbers, that we can find it to that. So let me finish, go ahead.
So we think... We just have to put that calendar in the journals in there.
Well, no, I know they've been waiting for a couple weeks.
They're not, I just got the email the other day.
Let's, we, we don't have a little argument, we can discuss it. I've been talking to George, I've been talking to Joe.
You probably got three other board members in there too, why are we talking that?
We are gonna present it, let's have it.
We presented it.
You thought we were gonna pretend everything's Sunday, but yet we're gonna spend, first time.
We're gonna be okay, Ed.
Well, you tell that to the taxpayers, you...
My goal, my goal, my goal is not to raise taxes again.
I think this whole board's been doing a great job for the last nine years going at, we have probably your problem in that.
And we've been working together to do it. So there's a motion in a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried.
Consider a motion appointing Joseph Neary as one of the members from or appointed by the Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township Board of Commissioners to the library board for their, for their vital loss.
Second.
Let me get the second motion.
You actually got that for her.
Jesus.
Thank you. Motion in a second, for Mr. Neary to be appointed. All in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried. Consider a motion approving the training indemnification agreement 0631096 amendment with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation.
Second.
Comments?
Yes. What is this, George?
Yeah, so, we entered into an agreement with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of Transportation to be able to utilize some of the buildings for fire, fire department training and SWAT training. These are the many buildings that are along 322 that are owned by the state. So we're, they're anticipating, we're gonna be putting in some demolition permits pretty soon for some of the buildings. This is gonna allow them to get in the train on those buildings, fire, and...
All right, okay, thank you.
Motion in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Ayes have it, motion is carried. Consider a resolution authorizing Michael Gaviusa as the president of the Board of Commissioners to sign any and all documents associated with training indemnification agreement 0631096 amendment with Commonwealth of Pennsylvania Department of, Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. Motion. Motion in a second, I assume there's no comments. All in favor?
I have the resolution 2020-24.
Consider a motion accepting a five-year purchasing agreement in the amount of $151,991 for car and body cameras to be used by the Upper Chi-Chesapeake Township Police Department with Axon under COSAR State Contract Purchasing Number 4400019257. So moved. Your second?
Um, yeah. Yeah, my, my comment is, basically last week, I mentioned that what I would like to see is, um, some, some, right, cultural sensitivity, diversity training. When I first got on the board, I had public safety, one of the things we did as part of community policing was we purchased bicycles and for the officers to be able to be out in the community on their bikes, which they utilize every spring and summer. So my question would be, do we need additional bikes? Do we need new bikes? That's, 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 that's one item. And, um, training, we haven't had any issues thankfully, and, you know, our officers have to do a great job, and they're out in the community, they know the community, they understand, you know, our residents, so I believe that, that has a huge, has had a huge impact on why we don't have issues like some other, some other areas, but I would like to be proactive in that, in that, and not just talk about it, actually do it.
Well, I spoke with the chief.
Okay.
He believes that the Pennsylvania State Troopers Training Program next year will include one of both of those items, and then in the past year, I believe it's, I can't find the email right now, but I believe 15 or 16 of our officers have gone, 16 have gone through a de-escalation training, in other words, a, a training to make situations less volatile. I know that doesn't answer the immediate concerns, but I think it's a step in the right direction, and we will wait until we see what the Pennsylvania State Police officer, and, you know, move forward with that.
Two things just to note on that. So first with the bikes, the bikes are maintained and we do replace them if necessary. I know it's time off, but I feel actually, I believe it was already this year for them to get two months on the bikes, so you do take care of them. And the other thing is, so the de-escalation training, if you see a lot of the articles out there where they talk about the Camden County Police Department, one of the things that they focused on with that, that they say helped them have so much success, was that training for the officers for the de-escalation, that's like, one of the hearts of like, how they are with the department. And I think, fortunately or unfortunately, I've had to see some training video from these body cameras, and watching that video, you see that actual process, and I can say that the four officers involved in that situation did an excellent job making sure that, you know, they were very sensitive to the needs of the individuals there, remained very... of the individuals there, um, remained very calm and were, were very hopeful through a situation that made it, that if they were, took a different approach to, could have ended way differently, so. But I, I, and I think it's a, a good idea, Tom was looking into the Pennsylvania training, and then we also discussed about, is there any other additional training that you can do as well?
So this is a five-year contract for $152,000. For. Cameras that we have in the car on the road here, are we replacing all of that?
The cameras in the cars will be replaced.
So.
Over a period of time.
Right. So all the car cameras are replaced over three years, and the body cameras will be all installed over three years, and then at the end of the five-year term, there's a replacement can happen. Right now, the, what they will be doing is replacing the old, there, there's two cameras that need to be replaced in the cars. So that's gonna happen whether it's through the previous company, which was bought out by Motorola, or if they go to this Axon. They like the Axon software because it interconnects with the, uh, like the devices, so there's multiple different things that can trigger the body cam coming on, and one of them is, um, you know, essentially the, the car camera thing turned on, so.
There, there's a, I remember the questions asked last year, what, I mean, last week, the difference in the number, I believe you said it was fifteen thousand, this will dollars to get, to get the, to get the body cameras, but these body cameras also interconnect with the cameras inside the car also, correct?
Yeah.
It's like, it's like, it's like, it's, it's a networking system.
Right, so when you look at the cost of it, fifteen thousand, you're gonna get the matter what, because you're gonna be replacing your old cameras, your cameras in the car, so really it's that additional cost for the year. And, uh, there's some suggestions of ways that that can be paid for, including, um, your, uh, the agenda tonight, which would be a resolution amendment in the fee schedule. A lot of insurance companies, uh, need video from us, and they purchase video from us, and our fee schedule currently reads from, uh, one hundred to five hundred dollars. They're recommending increase that to two hundred and fifty to a thousand dollars. Essentially, what that means is, like, we've been able to quantify how much time it takes Chris Jones to go back through and get a camera. If you were charging for his actual hours of his service, we're all charged about ten thousand dollars for months, but realistically, that doesn't make sense, but, but increasing that fee will help us just with paying it, and then also, there is a fund.
Yeah, basically, we anticipate, or we noted in the current budget, it's ten thousand dollars per, uh, cameras for, for this year, and we will take eighteen thousand dollars from the drug, um, per agreement with the chief, and that, that covers the first year of the year. After that, we anticipate the cost would be twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars, and we would need to come up with each year about ten thousand dollars for four years. We think we can, you know, I believe the number is probably eight thousand dollars currently in the, uh, drug funds, so worse comes to worse, you have three years of that covered as well as the first year, just from the drug fund, and that would mean we're no, uh, extra income from the, uh, drug fund. So I anticipate that we will be, that we'll be able to cover this, you know, in a realistic package.
So.
That answers my question. It's just, this, this has been my last comment, I think, I think it's a smart purchase, I think the camera's not only for our public safety, it's for our officer safeties also. Uh, we, we have utilized the cameras in the past, which helped us solve crimes, uh, which helped us, uh, get to the bottom of the truth when accu- when accusations were made, so I'm in favor.
Well, I would add that, um, I would want to table it till next month, um, and the reason B, I would like a commitment, not just see what the state of Pennsylvania, um, is gonna do, I want a commitment from our chief of police as to what trainings will be, um, required of our officers. I'm in favor of upgrading the car cameras, those need to be upgraded, we have those, I believe we should do that, but as far as, uh, any additional expenses, I would like a commitment from our chief as to what is gonna be required of our officers. So we can either take a motion to table, um, this, or amend the motion for, uh, the cameras, but I know we have a motion in the second, so.
We have a motion in the second, the bill.
Well, yeah, the motion to table makes precedence.
Second, a motion to table.
Okay, so we can discuss the motion to table, um.
Right.
I think that the.
Is there a time, time limit on this?
The, the original agreement was they, they gave it to us on, they gave it at five fourteen, we received it about a week later, okay, which is why I wasn't presenting before till next week, because I had only seen it the week before. Um, but we got them to extend it until the end of June, based on having our meetings this evening. Um, I, the only comment I want to say about the cameras is, if we upgrade the cameras this year ten thousand, that's a waste of ten thousand dollars, because we're gonna change the cameras again, if we, if we would go with this.
Okay.
I'd, I'd like to, I'd like to see this passed tonight, and we just want to make it a, a, uh, honest effort to move forward, you know, what you're.
Well, we have to vote over the motion to table.
George, you take a roll call to table, the yes vote is the table, the no vote is not the table, the yes is not the table.
Can Mr. Barco?
A no is not the table, a yes is the table.
No.
Can Mr. Whitaker?
Yes.
Mr. Goriusso?
No.
Mr. McCaskey?
Yes.
Mr. Amiri?
No.
We'll move back to the original motion.
And, and I'd like to comment on that, on, I mean, I, I understand the time, and I respect, which has came to us tonight, which, like I said, again, maybe it's made the budget a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, but the big thing is well. I understand exactly what Mr. Neary's saying about the ten thousand, but this is what I'm talking about, with us suddenly, and us tonight, yes, everything, we just spent ten, ten, ten. I'm concerned, but, and it's a lot of money, for five years, and I, I, and I understand what Mr. Neary's saying, but, I mean, you got ten years, we, or four years, we have to find out where the ten thousand, I'm sure that we can figure that out, just board or whatever we can do. I understand if we spent ten thousand on the cameras in our cars today, which I'm a hundred and ten percent for, and I, and I agree that it's, it's helped this community a lot, the police department, and a lot of issues, but to just come to us and want to spend a hundred and fifty-two.
But most of it's gonna be funded by the drug fund, right?
For the first year.
Buy increased fees here, buy increased fees and the drug.
What is this year's commitment? The total contract is a hundred and fifty?
Twenty-eight thousand dollars, ten thousand, um, ten thousand, which comes from the current budget, that is for camera replacement, and eighteen thousand dollars for the drug fund.
Right, so twenty-eight thousand is what we're paying in twenty twenty to get this contract agreement started.
Uh, I, I will take a motion in the second to pass this one.
We already have a motion.
So we have a.
Table one.
We already have one. Mr. Negoski, they're gonna call you, the yes vote is to pass, and no vote is not to pass.
Mr. Barco?
Yes.
Uh, can Mr. Whitaker?
No.
Mr. Goriusso?
Yes.
Mr. McCaskey?
I, I don't, um, it's tough, yeah, no, I don't like abstaining, because I'm okay with it, but I'm not okay with it, I, I mean, for a couple of things, because I want.
Again.
I know, I really, hold on, like.
We have to reschedule, we, we, we have a schedule.
The motion one for is a full group, so you don't even discuss a gap with that.
No.
Mr. Neary?
Yes.
Which carries?
Okay, uh, consider a motion approving, uh, the track refund list twenty dash, twenty twenty dash six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is carried.
Joe?
Oh, I forgot, I'm sorry, I said it wrong. Consider a resolution amending the township's fee schedule and increasing the charge for police department copies, reproductions, videos, and DVDs from one hundred to five hundred to two hundred and fifty to one thousand. Sorry.
Second, quite a question, George, you're saying the rest of the time is through the insurance company, if, if somebody else needs to come up, I mean, a resident or something?
Yeah, we went back and looked, these are for like the copies of the videos, and you look back through like previous years, and are almost like ninety-nine, seventy-nine percent of the time, it's insurance companies, and then the other four hundred quarters. No offense, Mike.
Can we leave it at one hundred to a thousand? I'd like to see the. You know what I mean?
Well, I think they have to go based off of time, so like he has to look at it and say, how much time, but, so you could leave it wider range, absolutely.
Okay, I, I agree, we'll amend the motion to one hundred to one thousand.
I'll do it.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is carried.
Resolution twenty twenty dash twenty-nine.
Consider a motion approving the list of bills to the amount of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars and seventeen cents. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is carried.
Joe, I hope we, number six, is it?
Number what?
Number six in the beginning.
Yeah, the road program.
Yeah.
We, we, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Consider a motion accepting the twenty twenty road program bid from A.S.A., in the amount of not too see four hundred and thirty-one thousand, nine fifty-four fifty.
Second.
Uh, motion in the second, any comments?
Questions? There you go. I'm just, you know, uh, working out the alternatives, alternatives and all that stuff in place. Some, some maybe, the alternative is, could have won or, you know, turn into the awards original streets, I'm gonna say sixty-eight thousand dollars, I don't understand why you need to do so much, you can't share good faith to people, just like, am I any left right tonight?
Well, this is, this is a joke, joke, like, I mean, the point that.
I mean, I was, I saw your speed officer, and that was another question on it, but I just don't, I, I don't think they need to spend four hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, I mean, you both is.
We don't have to, we just can't spend more than that, wait, with this motion.
Well, that's obvious.
Right, that's. No, I'm saying, we could go back if we want.
If I may, you, this is not general fund money, this is absolutely what fuels money, this is money that, that is provided by the state to, uh, based on guest tax, in order for, uh, you to, to do improvements, resurfacing, signing, street lighting, traffic signals, those types of things. This is not coming out of your general budget, with the caveat that you are getting county aid, county aid is out of your budget, out of your, your general fund budget, but that is reimbursed by the county, so the county aid number, we did a resolution in February, that number, once the road program is completed, the, the nine-nine-nine completion report sent to PennDOT, PennDOT then sends a letter to the county saying you are good to, to reimburse that amount of money back to the township, that goes back into your general fund. So, on the general's fund standpoint, there is no, um, funds that are being utilized for the resurfacing program.
Uh, two quick items to add to that, the budget for this year was four hundred and fifty thousand, so we're about, uh, eighteen thousand in savings from the budget perspective there. Uh, the other thing is, the, the, uh, road program, the, the liquid fuels account right now, because of the interest rate environment, is earning roughly, uh, point five eight percent, which is gonna get you, the amount that's in there is gonna get you a couple hundred dollars a month. Um, the last year, we paid ninety-five dollars a ton for asphalt, this year's contract is eighty-five, uh, dollars a ton, so if you basically put us at, so, so say next year we're back to ninety-five, that's gonna cost us about forty thousand more dollars to pay these roads, so there is, like, quantifiable, as I said, we've roped into this, um, there's savings from the perspective of, we'd be under our, our liquid fuels budget, so we would have some leeway with that eighteen thousand dollars, we could use it for, shoot, like electricity, we could look at some of that stuff. I, I will tell you from doing the liquid fuels, uh, what it, uh, you know, it's middles, that when you get into paying for other items of that, there's a lot of, uh, you're sure your paperwork that goes in that, so it's, you have time, so there's costs associated with that.
So, George, so, correct me if I'm wrong, we, we get four hundred and fifty thousand dollars for liquid fuel money?
Uh, we get four hundred and sixty something this year, so if you look into budget, the budget was, part of the liquid fuels was gonna cover the engineering costs of this project, which allowed to cover engineering costs, a percentage of, and then the rest was four fifty was budgeted for the, uh, the road program.
Thank you, Ms. Katania, thank you, George, for accomplishing that for us and the residents. Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it, motion is carried.
Yes, I believe so, so we'll move on to.
I don't think so.
All right. Um, is there any business? If not, we'll move on to our commissioners and professionals report, um, I'll start with Ms. Katania.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, you do have a copy of my report, it's available for everyone to, to, if they'd like, the, um, just a couple of things, I have road program on here, we've taken care of that, the Mill Road Basin is, will be substantially completed, you know, punch list today, um, just for the residents along Mill Road, that area will be, um, grass will be mowed, the one that they have the, uh, netting that they had placed off of it before the building, and, and six inches wide, so, yes, there is going to be, knowing that in case anyone hears any, um, complaints from the residents along there. Uh, we do apologize that for the, for the time that it's taken to get this project finished, and, um, I think, I think it turned out rather well. We still have a couple of trees that have to be replaced because they're dying, and there's, there's some minor items that need to be done as part of the punch list. The Jennifer Way Basin, we met with the contractor, he's putting together a schedule, but it looks like that Jennifer Way Basin work will start in three weeks, so, um, we'll, we'll see that starting, there is a letter that we, uh, put together that we'll be sending, um, to the contractor, he'll put it on his letterhead, so that all of the, the, uh, properties that are above that basin understand what's going wrong. Um, the last thing I have is the contracts for Trichester Avenue have been executed, so, uh, we forward those to, to the contractors, and we should be seeing that, that project start shortly. That's all I have, and I'll say more if I have any questions.
Question? I, I got just one quick one, um, they were surveying on Trichester Avenue as part of the, uh, three twenty-two project, are they gonna be widening Trichester Avenue, or actually would it?
There is, so this is our evidence in this, I think, I think the answer to that. There is no, uh, definite, uh, there is no plan that's been submitted, or anything that's been submitted to the township, uh, in reference to Fury Road, however, numerous times it's been communicated to PennDOT, that we feel that there needs to be something involved with that intersection on the three twenty-two project, and my understanding was that through some of our outreach to Ken McQueen, um, that, that mission has been instructed that they can evaluate that intersection and determine if there is something, so they were starting the process.
One of the residents got me and said that surveyors told them they're thinking ten foot of his property, they're probably putting a light up, George, but, that's it, so who's to make?
Not received anything, I do know that for, for years we have been advocating to PennDOT and sending letters to Ken McQueen, that we believe that that should be considered part of the project, and whether at this time, I have no official information that that's part of the project.
Please, please, uh, I got the plans from, uh, Brian Seidel, they look really good in the department, any question? I thought everybody's on the same page, hey, the lamp post, is that gonna be a frosted glass in that one though? That, that was a good question. I guess they're, they're along as eye walls?
There, that's, there's two lamps that he has on the plan, um, that is the typical, uh, streetscape light of the slat.
Right, is it frosted glass in there?
It is frosted glass, it's the same as what you have now.
Up the other?
Up the other, yeah.
Do you, do you, do you get like the frosted lamp?
Yeah, I think that's.
No, I'm just saying the bar.
And, and, and to your point, when, when we got the, when we got the information from. From the lighting company, um, that that information had clear glass, and we understood that, that clear glass was initially in those lamp posts, and then were changed to frosted glass, so it is frosted glass, as a matter of fact, Brian Seidel sent over, um, all of these signs, so you should have a, um, probably. a, um, probably.
Yeah, I have, I have that, sir. All of it.
The package of signs that.
So the answer is yes.
Or, or the welcome sign.
Yeah, so any sign going into township, welcome signs or anything like that, will follow that, that structure. They would, they, he took it a little far with putting all the different parts, we just wanted a scalable sign. So that sign is scalable from a couple of different design perspectives. And he put the plantings in there, so now we have like, the, the signs going in, here's what the sign would look like, the letter would be the same, the font, the color, and then here's the recommended plantings and bylaws and everything.
Then, um, this place though. Yeah, the, the, the stem, the stem and the brick and the wall and everything, I'll say, it's all the place I like, I like the fast for giving part, too. Um, the other question, how many with Wawa was the cost estimate? I was talking to them, but they wanna get to, I, I was shocked how close they are, they wanna move nature line, move it to the school, please, some about the cost estimate that usually comes, so we can do some site work on the school.
We received, I wanna say it was either Monday or Tuesday from Bob Lynn's office, a cost estimate, that they're doing in two phases. Um, I need to speak to them because nothing, there are no plans, the approved land development plans are not phased plans. So I need to understand why it is that, that they feel that they can phase a project when it's not, it wasn't approved as a phased project.
I think I, I think I can answer that, Lisa.
Okay.
I spoke to Mark D'Amico today, and I think the, it's, there's a little bit of confusion there. Provco is doing some of the site work, and Wawa is actually doing some of the building, or a lot of the building and the landscaping work. So it's not really a phased aspect of it, but it's just two different contractors or two different parties doing that work.
So will that be one developers agreement then?
Uh, we're working on that right now, as a matter of fact, and we're trying to figure out whether we're gonna have two or one, or one that, that has cross indemnifications. So we're, we're actually negotiating that, that's one of the things I was gonna report on, so.
Okay, unfortunately, I, I understand that, except we have a plan that shows that McKay Avenue, that lot number one and a portion of lot number two is part of the, of, of the cash escrow for one project, and then the other project, the other, actually Wawa and Givens is, is the separate cost estimate. So we can talk about.
Yep, mhm, yes. And we're, we're gonna, we're gonna talk about i- if it's gonna be two separate agreements, we're gonna talk about dividing that and obviously getting your approval before it's done, so.
They would actually, under the subdivision land development ordinance, they're required to give us those phasing plans board approval, which we haven't yet. So I just wanna make sure that we're, we're getting what we need to get done, so that we're in compliance, but, um, Wawa is moving forward.
Yeah, I, I just got that call about four o'clock today, so.
Okay.
Anybody have any other comments? I just, if not, I just have one. At least whatever we can do to make assist to get the insurance agency into the new building, or not the renovated, the renovated building, if township can work, put them in any way to get that done, I appreciate it, so that way we can get this moving on and get, we get a lot on.
I'm understanding that they only had demolition permits at this point.
Oh, no.
Do not have any of the other building permits, unless that's changed in the past week. Um, I can check that before.
I think I missed that, that they were almost ready to.
What? They still have PennDOT approvals, but we don't do PennDOT process as well, so.
They, they have, they have the HOP for the improvements, what they don't have at this point is the HOP for the, um, they don't have HOP in hand, they do have approval level, um, so they don't have the permit itself yet, and they do not have any of the stormwater because that stormwater was just approved about a week ago.
Okay. Yeah, I drove by a couple of weeks ago and I saw the works, and I was, I didn't realize they were moving that fast, so I guess, thanks for that.
And one last thing, and I don't know if everybody's got a copy of this, um, I've included there, but we're bored to take a look at it because of the location, and what more way to do it, document McKay Avenue, where they really wanna put it in the park. I think Brian just said it's in there to show, so if there's a circulation or everybody thinks to go, I'm fine with it. The point, we don't want it in the way of people, or the same type of, the same issue, and once they move it, it's gonna be moved once. But take a look at it, I don't know if everybody's got a copy, if they've got anything to do.
If everyone would take a look at it, because that has not gone to Wawa, you have to learn to vet it through the board before you send it over to Wawa, make sure the board is comfortable with it.
Let's move on to our solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, you have my written report, uh, on there, we've taken care of most of the action items that are on there, I just wanted to let you know, uh, I know Commissioner Neary had asked about the Peach Street, uh, stormwater project, we've got the easements are drafted, and we're just finalizing those copies, they'll be ready for signature very shortly. I've been in discussion with the attorney for the Willbrook condominiums, the clubhouse, uh, we're doing some finalization and cleaning up, uh, some of the drafts for the developers' agreement and escrow agreement, uh, but we should be able to come to that resolution very shortly. Um, and I believe that the other issue was the Wawa, I was just gonna report that I started to, uh, have some conversations with that, and we'll get those developers' agreements, hopefully within the next couple of weeks.
Like for the Willbrook clubhouse, is there any issue with, with easements?
Uh, the, the easement issues are really dealt with the sewer authority, uh, as to how they're going through that, I don't know what the deal is with the easements at this stage of the game, all I'm doing is really working on the public site improvements for the, uh, developers' agreements.
Well, if, if the owner of the property where the easement's supposed to go in is not agreeable to it.
That's, that's between the developer and the owner of the property.
Right, or note that it's not the township holding anything up, it's, it's between two different individuals and not the township.
That is correct.
Okay, just wanna get that after. There's other questions for our solicitor, move on to our township manager's report.
I just wanna thank the board, uh, obviously with the guys in my contract.
Can I ask you one quick question? My apologies, Lisa, um, yesterday I did ride by the church, and the fence didn't get up, with the exception of a section on the right side that, that I had spoken about, looking at the parking lot, um, of the street, that area was, I was ours, so it's, I guess, the, the, um, homeowner had, they're holding the wire fence in there, but I think that, I'm assuming that's where they were talking about putting the, the, um, tree that will be on that side. I'm not sure what, but, yeah.
Move back to church.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You were thanking us.
I was gonna monologue. Uh, you know, thank you for approving the contract, you know, I think we've done a lot really good things here, the board here, the building grace and progressive, and those who keep the township ahead. I think we've got a lot of opportunities, uh, things that we can still improve on, and I think we're very continue to improve on. I'm looking forward, I'm looking forward to this weekend when we have our, uh, short planning session, I think there's a couple of really unique ideas and things that we can do that can really set, set us in a good position for the long term. Um, you know, thank you for bringing Andrew on board full time, because he does not know what he's in for, the amount of nights that he's gonna be working on these meetings, but, uh, he seems to like it here, so, uh, you know, he's probably gonna end up, uh, you know, on the cot in the recovery room in there. And, uh, just, you know, uh, the, the, the board taking the, uh, the lead here with, uh, with the non-permanent restaurant operations, you know, it's been really tough time for our small businesses, so relaxing some of the regulations for that and waving the feet for that should help out some of these businesses that wanna be able to do outdoor dining, um, so taking the lead on that, uh, the board did a great job, and, uh, just a lot of positive things going on, but keeping it in the right direction.
Any que, any question for our, our manager? Kevin? All right, if not, we'll move on to our, um, vice chair, Joe Backfield.
Thank you. Um, highway sanitation is pretty much back to normal now, um, got a full crew back in and working, um, able to go back to Emily Recycling Plant in Delaware, so recycling and trash are separate again, you know, try to remember your little old recycling rules we set up recently before all this started. Um, all my other reports are on file, the highway report, the sewer authority report, but, uh, just wanted to make a comment on the sewer authority. Um, when all this stuff started with the dog horse sale and all that, we were wondering where we were with our sewer authority, so he's all got a copy of the financial report for the sewer authority. Part of this is in good shape, it looks good, and George answered a couple of my questions tonight, but he's all got a copy to say where that's at. That's all I had, I mean, if anybody has any questions.
Any questions for our vice chair, Mr. Backfield?
Yeah, uh, just in case you get a, a call or anything, um, Cleveland, uh, Cleveland Avenue, whatever it is, there is a streetlight out, like guys, or guys who've had it, it's a few issues, so if anybody actually have any, we can talk about it.
Our guys know about it.
Yeah, we know about it, I can assure you, it's a light, or just eager, it's not, it's just eager, so.
I, I had an issue in my work, too. Apparently they put some bolts and stuff in the lease, and they're not, they're pulling the organs out and not, not filling the holes. So the highway guys filled the hole just to, for the safety, but I mean, do you, we have a contractor somebody we didn't?
Yeah, we followed up with them.
Did, did you follow?
Yeah, it, um, they did a lot of them, like during the, during the stay home order, and appears the contractor, like they're used to that kind of just.
Like saving the hole in there.
So are there questions for Commissioner Backfield, or we'll move on to Commissioner Walker.
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Um, just an update, Hart and Soul met, they had their, um, their team meeting on June first, Monday, June first. They are in phase three of the training, that's gonna take place on Monday, June twenty-ninth. They had, um, so far, a hundred and sixty-eight surveys completed, our goal is three hundred. They have started what they call child chats, they're, um, doing some networking within the community to generate, uh, interest and in hopes of spreading the word so that more residents can complete the survey. So there is no end date as of now to when the survey's gonna be closed, so it's still open, so we're urging people to, um, continue sharing that information on their social media platforms to, and urge residents to complete the survey. It's amazing, everybody all over Facebook, a lot of crazy stuff, but don't think about your community, can't go out and survey, go out and survey. Um, they have, so far, what, twelve hundred and twenty-seven people have signed up for Delco Alerts, which is great, um, that's, that's, that's awesome, and, um, you get the alerts from the county, but then we also get alerts specific to, um, your township, specifically when they talk about the trash, right, on back to the record trash, that was a nice alert. So, um, it's definitely worth getting, it keeps, it keeps you up to date on everything that's happening in Delco and in your specific community. That's Hart and Soul, we have some grants pending, um, I asked Barb to just send me grants that she has actually, um, or is actually thinking about applying for, and, um, grants that she has applied for that we're attending the, I know it's a occasional, so she's gonna modify the current list that she says, and it can just have everything on, and I'm like, okay, what is this, what is this? So we're gonna have it structured a little different, so I'll update the board on that next month. And, um, recreation, so recreation has opened back up to, um, a certain extent, we are still in the yellow phase, so groups of twenty-five or less, um, we're going to have some outdoor events here at Fury Road, and we're also looking at doing some of the outdoor movies like we did last year in the neighborhood parks, people really enjoy that, it's outside, it's spread out, so I think that's gonna be a good thing, but I know right now we have some events scheduled specifically for Fury Road. Recreation Center's gonna be closed, um, the board, the recreation board decided not to have camps because of liability issues, so they're gonna have the playgrounds are gonna be open, they'll have, um, events or, you know, have things where people can come and participate on their own. The skate park is open, the basketball courts are open, uh, throughout the township, the community service building, we're gonna have that available, um, for rent as well, for small, um, for small events, and that will be monitored. And, um, right now, we're just waiting for the green phase, really, green, I guess, to, uh, so that we can have more people, or at least if we're in the yellow, maybe they will increase the number that people can, uh, participate in, in getting. Um, the library, um, is going to have, the Friends of the Library has an event next week where they're going in their new officers, uh, so they're gonna have a library meeting there, um, at, uh, it's gonna be an outdoor event. Um, and my sorority, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, which, um, has been fortunate enough to use this room, meeting space for our executive committee meetings once in a while, we also use the, um, the gym for our bingo, and we had a dinner on your hour event in February that was successful, and so we're gonna be donating, um, I think eleven hundred dollars to the library on next, uh, Wednesday at their event, we have the executive library with a check, um, a donation for our sorority. So that's all I have.
Just, just so the public's clear, you're not, you're not using it now, the facility?
No, the bingo was last November, but then the other event was in February, nothing's happening right now.
One, one question, what phase is it when we might be all open, the rec center?
Uh, green, we'll.
Green?
Yeah.
The basketball players have been asking when, when it's open.
Um, Wednesday, that's from four to five, probably go to six, it'll probably be a little bit long, but it's gonna start at four o'clock. I can forward you, um, for the board to, to, to email. I think that's open.
Cool.
Yes.
Uh, just to piggyback, so I think Hart and Soul did a really good job getting these, to help people on Delco Alert, that's not an easy task to get people here through that sign process, and, uh, just to let Andrew know that his next task is that he's required to get out, get additional thousand residents over the next three months, so that's gonna be one of his jobs now. Um, the library meeting, Andrew will also be attending to take some pictures, Betsy had wanted to do the check presentation here, Moonie, unfortunately, that's not gonna work, but, uh, Andrew has volunteered to, uh, stay late that day, go over there and take pictures and attend, and then just kudos to the rec board and Brian, uh, you know, they're doing, they're doing a really good job getting through this and, and actually like, all through this, and my planning board, what can we do with the next phase, so I think we're gonna be back up to bottom and hope for soon.
And all the online contests.
Yeah.
The sidewalk talk, the, you know, upper tie, uh, all the. That's been generating a lot of interest, the animal who could best pet, that was like the biggest one, the animal who uses their pets. So hopefully we can get some of that to, uh, those people to go out and survey. And then to you, Liz, Andrew, survey.
Let's go to number one.
Um, so there's no questions for Commissioner Walker, we'll move on to Commissioner Edward Yaski.
Hi there, good morning, this week, the agreements for the train has already been done, emergency management, um, fire marshal, we meet with them, some, shortly, they throw their budget, everything looks the same, uh, if there's too much going on, emergency management. I did shoot an email out at the last week's meeting about the, uh, power outage, uh, the emergency management drill through the areas, I mean, during the loading of the stress, but they're going to do okay. Uh, they're, they're still working on, uh, we're rude even after we've planned the evening next Thursday, so, uh, for the weekend, uh, just getting the power up over in that area. Um, Helm's Manor is a traffic county meeting that we're having with the, the development that put a petition together, Monday night at six p.m., uh, it's gonna be here and at four at the same time, uh, much longer than people respond back yet, and we know the development, uh, has, has a letter, uh, Lisa, myself, the chief, George, and Alex, or, or Alex, Albert, will be here on to answer any questions, and as part of the road program, but I'm not sure that we're gonna go over to the second. perspective, someone had it, but we won't say. Other than that, that's it.
Any questions for Commissioner Rick Astley? If not, we'll go to Commissioner Eric Jaski.
Thank you, Mr. President. The only thing that has been covered is that the financial statements are available in the office for anybody who's ever been involved, and that would be all I have.
Any questions for Commissioner Jaski? If not, we'll wrap up. My report, license and inspection, the report is in your folders. Just one quick note, year to date, the map collective for lean is 11,434 hours and 52 cents. The zoning board will have two hearings on July 6th, one in the fifth ward, it's about a yard setback from 50 feet to 42 feet, and the other one is in the third ward. It's, has to do with an accessory structure with a height variance and reducing, and reduce spacing between the, between the accessory structure that exists in the building from 35 feet to 12 feet. So that's on the zoning board hearing. Planning board, Jake's Fireworks and Auto Zine will go before the planning commission on June 25th. Both will be for final land development. Jake's Fireworks is in the second ward, and Auto Zine is the fiveth ward. The lights are still out on the floor, lean. I've talked to kids about that. I'm trying to get them back on. Unfortunately, we're still working to do that. I don't believe I have anything else, but I don't have anything else. Does anybody have any comments for me?
Light.
I'm sorry, streetlights. I'm sorry.
It's a moment where we sent our contractor out and they checked everything. It's a pickup power issue. Some crews got pickup.
I have one question. Would something submit for Parky Road, the apartment?
Planning, what, what you plan? Yes, I believe you were supposed to be, you said.
I got one.
Yes.
Yeah.
An accessory structure, is it? That's, that's what it's...
What, I'm not sure what they're putting in at the moment.
It's supposed to be, I'm sorry, it's, it's, my understanding that it's going to be office based slash laundry. That's what was told to me.
Not going to be more unit?
No, it's like a little office building. It's about maybe 25 feet wide by, you know what, I don't want to get a lot of people on it.
I'm not worried about that.
The only thing I know is they're asking for variance in the height. They want it to taller than 15 feet. And the distance between the existing structure building and the new one they want to put in, they want to go 12 feet instead of the E35. So I don't think they can add along to the building because it's at the end of the unit and it was likely one of those there, so that's why they're probably not doing that. But again, that's the zoning board's decision. If you're not happy with it, you know, we can certainly call the plank and, you know, we'll do a letter.
Well, let's see what they say. They don't come out until July, right?
So just to clarify, this is for, they submitted a zoning hearing application because the proposed plan that they want to do will not comply with the township zoning. They would still need to, if given a approval by the zoning hearing board, then they could potentially bring that plan to the board for a, to ask for some redevelopment.
Right. Just one last thing, about 800 Governor's Avenue, I know we've been talking about, once the stay at home order is lifted, we have 30 days to start the timeline. My only question to our solicitor is, I know that there was legislation passed to end the disaster order, and I know there's, I know there's some pushback from the governor. So right now, this 30 day stay at home order is still in effect, or we have like a limbo with it, or...
Far as I know, it's still in effect.
Okay. So we're still on that. All right, I just want you to move on. Any other questions? If not, I have a motion on the second to adjourn. So who?
I got it.
All favor?
Aye.
Any votes? Ayes, ayes. Thank you, everyone.